I'd like to call this meeting into order, please. Can we start with roll call, Ms. Bauer?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinter.
Here.
Madam Chair, the board has certified the presence of the board. Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Dr. Snead, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, there are no adjustments to the agenda. Thank you.
Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to the acceptance of approval of the agenda, please.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Just a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Dropping down the superintendent's reports and recommendations, Dr. Snead, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And to begin my superintendent's report recommendations, I want to have permission to visit an earlier event that we had in the day today. So it's okay with the board, okay? Today, we were able to have our groundbreaking at Gordon Barber Elementary School, and several people were in attendance, but Channel 29 News was also there. And Channel 29 was able to do a quick turnaround in terms of their reporting. And I didn't know if we wanted to show that report from Channel 29. I know Mr. Sedano, the principal of Gordon Barber Elementary School, and Mr. Berry also supplied us a link, and so I didn't know if we were able to show that. It's only about 1 minute 47 seconds to take. Okay. Yes, and we also, I think, have another video if we want to show it. I'll be right up to the person.
NBC 29's Isabel Cleary shows us what's in store for the elementary and Head Start students. It's our top story at 5:00. This piece of land will be a space for new classrooms that will bring all K through 5 students together under one roof.
Yay, we're finally here. We're finally breaking ground.
Two, three.
It's just a long time coming, and we are glad to be starting.
Gordon Barber Elementary is starting a $6.3 million project that will bring the school up to par and bring their kids together.
Teachers are very excited. They're looking forward to having some state-of-the-art facilities, really fresh-looking spaces to learn in.
And it's going to be a wonderful new environment for our students and staff and community.
The Head Start program will be moving out of an old house and into the kindergarten building.
There will be no disruptions to the start of next school year. Our students will be able to learn while the construction is ongoing. Most of the loud and heavy-looking stuff will be done during the summer and during long times.
Flags are down, and the construction team is ready to go. This school has not seen a renovation like this in decades.
It'll be since the '70s that we've actually had brick-and-mortar construction. We're thankful for the community support and the county putting forward what's necessary in order to fund it, and the students will be very thankful once they get the chance to come into the building and learn in the new space.
Gordon Barber Elementary hopes the construction will be done by next summer. In Orange County, Isabel Cleary, NBC 29 News.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for letting me sort of go out of order here. Okay. Do we have another video?
It was good.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, our first item that I have is a presentation. Well, basically, it's essentially an out-of-state field trip request, and we are asking for action this evening. The out-of-state field trip request is basically is from our CTE department is to attend the Sea Perch International Competition at the University of Maryland. It's kind of exciting. Our own Mr. Parker will be taking students, three students, up to the University of Maryland. It's a total of 550. But what I wanted to do is give a little background information is that this is actually an international competition for sea perch. And sea perch is an underwater remotely operated vehicle, or an R O V. His students competed in the regional competition and they won first place, so this is what landed them in the international competition, which thankfully, I guess, it's in the University of Maryland College Park. And this comes to you per policy, not only, it's not an overnight trip, but it is an out-of-state trip, and so we need to go before the board to get that approved per policy. So we're excited for these three youngsters. Again, what landed them in this spot was getting first place at the regional, and again, remotely operated vehicles, so they're very excited for these students. That's really enough. That's all the information that I have. And again, I apologize if we're at a work session, we're asking for action, but I think you understand.
So I agree. So this is an actual item, like you said. So could we entertain a motion to accept this out-of-state field trip?
Certainly. Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion that we accept this as proposed.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Dispose. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brings me to item B, the presentation of supplemental appropriations. Now, again, this is just a presentation for these supplemental appropriations, and we know, you know, we come to you from time to time in order to meet the guidelines. These will be presented to you with action expected June 6th, and Mr. Honaker is bringing those to us at this time.
Good evening. I'm here to ask for supplemental appropriation for three funds, the ESSER Fund, the Food Service Fund, and the Adult Education Fund. Under the ESSER Fund is one to address unfinished learning, before and after-school programs, and summer programs. In addition to that, under the American Rescue Plan, there's some additional money for homeless children and used relocation, reallocation, I'm sorry. There's a couple of different items in the Food Service Grant, the USDA Supply Chain Assistance, and we also got an equipment grant. And then there's some items under the Adult Education Grant as well. I know it's applied description of each one. Does anyone have any questions on these items? All right.
This is, we're talking about this year's budget or next year's?
This is this year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Most of, most of will be able to carry on because it's the ESSER funds, but it's this year's budget. Thank you.
So if there's no questions on these, then I would entertain a motion to beforehand accept these.
I make a motion we approve the ESSER funds as requested.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Dispose. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brings me to my item under my report C. It's the presentation of our 2022 federal grant applications. Essentially, bringing that to you is Ms. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, excuse me, Dr. Honaker, and Ms. Taylor, and they will provide the detailed information for titles one, two, three.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Snead, members of the board. Tonight, we're providing information related to our federal grant applications. We'll be seeking your approval to submit the grant applications for the coming school year. Again, this covers Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. I'll begin with just a timeline of the grant process. Of course, tonight, we're presenting to you requests approval to submit the applications. Those are due July 1st. Then we go through a revision process, if necessary, with the Department of Education. Once those are approved, we wait for the final allocations in August, and then we begin our process of submitting requests for reimbursement for any of the expenditures. You'll see that each of the grants that we share tonight, we write these applications based on level funding, and this will be reflected with the amount that we received last year. To begin, Dr. Honaker is going to talk about developing the plans and application process. This is a graphic you've seen before, but we think it's a good one just to kind of show you the process that we go through with all of the different decisions that we make. And so in order to develop these plans, these are requirements of federal funds. They have certain things that you have to do in order to meet the requirements of the grant. Starting from the very bottom with parent advisories, we do get input from our parents of students in these different subgroups that we'll talk about as we go through, to get their input on what they think is needed in the programs to support their students. We also do a needs assessment, and we get input from not only the parents, part of that needs assessment comes from that parent advisory, but also from principals and teachers and other, in other areas, depending on which grant it is. We utilize academic data to inform how we use the grant money to best serve the most students. Teacher input, they request, they put input into us for requesting instructional materials for different trainings that they might need, as well as the needs assessment gives us information on that piece. We have different specialists, reading specialists, math coaches. We have different teachers who provide interventions to students, like our ESOL teachers in different areas. And then all of these have a part to them where we provide professional development to train STEM on different areas. The first of the grants is the Title I, federal grant. This grant supports instructional programs in schools with the highest percentages of students from low-income homes. Currently, the schools identified as Title I sponsors are Gordon Barber, Orange Elementary, Unionville, and Lightfoot Elementary. All these schools currently have school-wide Title I programs, meaning that we can serve all the students in the school because they have a percentage of 40% or greater. Funds are used to provide reading specialists, instructional materials, and parent engagement materials. Again, you'll see that this is level funding for the purpose of completing the initial grant application that's listed at the top for you, and then we will await the final allocation, and that can also be adjusted through the course of the grant cycle. Next, Dr. Honaker is going to explain Title II. So Title II funds are used to support, basically, professional development, professional learning for any instructional person in the division. It can be teachers or principals. We also utilize it for long-term projects. We have done many things, like when we had the pandemic, we used Title II funds to help us with the online learning. We've done visible learning in the past, all kinds of different topics to help with research-based instructional practices in the classroom. We also utilize it for sustained professional development within our county. We have our district reading and math. Part of their salaries are paid out of Title II so that they can provide ongoing professional learning. And then, of course, this supports conferences and training for others who need to go to outside trainings. So that's what Title II is. And last year, we received 172,476. And again, as Judy, as Dr. Anderson said, we will await the final allocation in August. I think I'm up for the next one, too. The next one is Title III. The purpose of our Title III grant, it's a small grant, as you can see. It's right around $23,000, and that supports our ELL programs. We utilize most of these funds because these funds have to be above and beyond anything that's offered to any other student in the division. So we utilize this money to support a division-wide ELL tutor, as well as some additional instructional materials for those students. And now, Ms. Taylor will do the last. And then there's Title IV. Title IV, it's approximately $53,000. It fluctuates a little bit each year. Funds under Title IV are used to support programs to access opportunities for well-rounded education for all students, to support school conditions, for student learning, in order to create a healthy and safe school environment, and to support access to personalized learning experiences supported by technology and professional development with the, for the use of technology. These funds that we'd like to apply for will be used to support STEM curriculum, professional development for the STEM curriculum, and a student support coach, and outpatient counseling services here in the division. And so this evening, we're asking for permission to apply for these grants. And if you're to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of these three ladies?
I just thank you for putting it together, taking the time to make the slides. It makes it much more meaningful to us that we can see, we hear the words, but it's nice to see it in print, so thank you.
With that, Mr. Hopkins, would you like to entertain a motion to accept this?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve the federal grant applications for year 2022, 23, as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you. This will help expedite that process. Item D is something that has, I'm sure that everyone's read about, and that is how the USDA area eligibility waivers for extended free meals are soon to expire June 30th of this year. And to that end, not unlike any other school division, we've had a lot of conversation around that with Ms. Blair. And so standing before you today is Ms. Linda Blair, our school nutrition supervisor, to share with the board our school year meal prices for the next year. Ms. Blair.
Good evening. Thank you. So as Dr. Snead said, the area eligibility waivers that extended free meals to all of our students expire on June 30. Six of our schools will not be affected by this waiver expiration because they are already provided with free meals under the community eligibility provision. To qualify for CEP, a school must have an identified student percentage of at least 40% or more. The schools that currently are enrolled in it are Gordon Barber, Prospect Heights, Teak, Orange Elementary, Unionville, and Lightfoot. So the families that make up this ISP are those who are identified as directly certified by Social Services, the Department of Social Services. These families that DSS certifies are those who qualify for SNAP, TANF, Medicaid, homeless, migrant, runaway. Also, it includes our Head Start and early Head Start students. So when calculating community eligibility, school districts have been encouraged by the Department of Education to include schools that are recognized as what's considered potentially eligible. So to be potentially eligible, you need an ISP of 30 to 39.99%. It's below 40%, but it's really close. So our schools that are potentially eligible are the Locust Grove Schools, Locust Grove Elementary, Primary and Middle, and also the high school. The school nutrition program is primarily funded by federal reimbursements for each meal that we serve per student, so we're basically paid by the trick. The current federal free reimbursement is $2.35 for each breakfast meal that we serve, and $3.68 for each lunch meal we serve. And the paid reimbursement rate is much lower. For that, we get 33 cents for breakfast, 37 cents for lunch. Annual federal meal reimbursement rates are released each year in July, so we don't have those yet for this coming year, but they will be out soon. So school groups with an ISP of 40% or more, if you group the schools together, would receive the free reimbursement rate or a percentage of the student meals served. I'm giving you all this information to kind of help you understand, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go on behind this. So stop me if you know this. It's complicated. So this is determined by multiplying that ISP, that 40% or more, by 1.6. So meals that are not reimbursed at the free rate will be reimbursed at that lower paid rate. So the lower reimbursement, and no student payments are collected at those schools, the schools that are CEP. The lower reimbursement rate for schools with less than 40% ISP will affect the revenue of the school meal program because we will be getting less reimbursement. But we are able to cover some of this cost, at least most of it, with nutrition funds from other funds that we are able to get from the government and from à la carte sales and things, or the things that we do. So we have found that we're able to include all three of the Locust Grove schools in that CEP factor when we average them together. We will not, and that will give us a free rate of 68% reimbursement, which isn't bad at all. We will not be able to qualify the high school because if we put the high school in that equation, it brings the required below the 40%. So then we're below our 40% requirement, so the government won't let us do it. So the high school students will need to pay for their meals in this upcoming school year, and unfortunately, that waiver is expiring. So based on their meal program qualifications, whether the student is free, reduced, or full pay, that is how they'll pay for their meals. Families of Orange County High School students are encouraged to apply for SNAP. That would be a big help to the community if they reply, if they think they might qualify. Also, you can apply for the free school meal program, which we have an online application program. We also will have paper applications available beginning in July. Those haven't been released by the DOE yet, so once they are, we'll have them out. There are pretty obviously many advantages to providing free meals to students, including increased meal participation, reduction in school meal debt, and improvement in attendance and test scores, it has been, it has been noted. During that waiver period, when all the kids ate for free, we experienced a really sharp increase in participation, and we brought our meal debt down to zero. So by including Locust Grove schools in the CEP factor, I feel like this will help us maintain these gains that we have already achieved. So the upcoming school meal prices, that would be for the high school students, would be $1.55 for breakfast and $2.90 for lunch. This is the rate that it's been for probably, I don't know, three or four years. We haven't gone up in a while, so that's still the rate. 30 cents for breakfast and 40 cents for lunch if you qualify for reduced. Adult and visitor meals are not reimbursed at all, so I don't get any reimbursement for those, so I can't give them at the discount that the students get. So the adult or guest meals are $2.20 for breakfast and $3.80 for lunch, which is pretty darn reasonable. So I have already received that USDA guidance that I was waiting for when I initially wrote this, and we will not be required to raise these meal prices.
I should have some. Are there any questions, Ms. Blair?
Do we have the dollar figure of as to what the high school would actually, what we would actually need to have the high school free of charge as well? I could, I could work that out, but now I don't. Just curious.
In qualifying, you said there's a county agency that qualifies for SNAP and other programs. Is that correct?
So the Department of Social Services, just want to show the best. The Department of Social Services qualifies people as what's called directly certified based on whether they have SNAP, TANF, migrant, runaway, homeless, or also our Head Start students are qualified under that direct certification. So it's the Department of Social Services in Virginia, in Richmond, that gathers that list of people together and sends that information to me, which lets me know.
The question is, do we operate a separate system? In other words, do we qualify people that are not on that list?
We do. In the high, in the high school, if they're not in a CEP school, then they can fill out an application to qualify for free meals. Is that what you're asking?
Right. In other words, that's in the high school?
But only in the high school. In the CEP schools, I am not permitted to accept any applications.
And are you the one that makes the decision? How is the decision made?
On whether somebody qualifies for free meals under their income, basically, not through Department of Social Services. That information is put into a computerized system that is approved by the state. And either the income level meets or doesn't meet, and we send them a letter, the family a letter, saying, you know, you've met this program, you can be free meals, or then you've reduced, or no, you don't meet the income requirements, and they can reapply if things change.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think it's kind of fascinating to see that the number of identified students in the high school dropped so drastically to say, well, TAC and OES.
Well.
Just because.
All of the schools feed into the high school, so I think that's part of it. And also, I think that people are less, less likely to apply for SNAP, TANF, that kind of thing, than they're in the high school. Maybe that happens more with the youngers, and when they get older, they're. I don't know.
It's not one of the, say, I need the help.
Yeah. And so these aren't, these numbers aren't based on people that applied for a free meal program through the school nutrition program. These numbers are people that the Department of Social Services qualified based on SNAP, TANF, those other, you know, these qualifications that I outlined. So this is above and beyond anybody actually filling out a free meal application. And at those six schools that are already qualified for CEP, I'm not permitted to take applications for those families. For one thing, they're not needed, and the DOE won't let me. So if we move forward with adding Locust Grove into that mix, I will not be taking applications for Locust Grove students, but I will be taking them for high school classes and hoping that everybody applies. It's either yes or no, so it doesn't hurt to apply.
All right. Is everyone comfortable with going ahead and accepting this as well?
I just make one comment, since we have a couple of new school board members, and it really hasn't effect, hadn't been discussed since we had COVID and everybody wasn't paying for lunch. But back when people were paying for lunch, the USDA actually was making us raise the price of lunch, and we didn't, we didn't, we don't, didn't have any control. I didn't hear any raise here tonight, but I just wanted the school board members to know. We control a lot of things, but we control the cost of lunch.
Okay. So, Mr. Hopkins, did you want to enter the motion?
Yes. I make a motion we approve the nutrition program as presented.
Okay. Can I have a second? Or second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
And Ms. Blair, you also have item E.
Yeah.
This is very important. This is the, we talked about the food. Now we're going to talk about the milk, which is good news.
And so, you know, and in these times of supply chain issues, we're fortunate. We're very fortunate to have an awesome dairy that replied to our bid request and has been serving us for many years. There are some dairies that are not staying in business, and so there are some school districts that are having trouble receiving milk for their students. So we've been pleased with the service and the prices and the quality of the milk. It's not perfect every time, but anytime that it isn't, and we reach out to them, they fix it, and it's just like any, just like any supplier. But we've been very fortunate. They've been timely with deliveries and helping. Pet dairy.
Thank you. Again, you know, I don't know if you guys, this is a standard contract. We do it every year.
It went out to bid, but there was only one that replied.
So if everybody's comfortable with somebody entertaining a motion to accept this?
I would move to approve the dairy products fund by renewal, as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Blair. Nicely done, and I'd like to thank the board as well for your support. Item F, this is the presentation of a propane supply contract renewal for next year, FY 23. Again, this is information with expected action June 6th. And here to give you the report, Mr. Arm.
Thank Dr. Snead. Madam Chair, members of the board. The administration is recommending a fifth one-year extension of our index price contract for protein supply and fossil gas. The current contract was originally approved by the school board at the work session on May 22nd, 2017, with the option to extend the contract annually for up to six additional years. So we will have one more year of possible renewal, and then the contract will go up to bid in April and May of 2024. So we will have one more year of possible renewal, and then the contract will go up to bid in April and May of twenty twenty-four, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Given that the index pricing typically rises during the heating season, especially during an unusually cold winter, in most years, we have been able to secure a fixed price per gallon to protect the division from these fluctuations. The fixed price can be locked in at a time that is beneficial to the school division, or if this action is not taken, the index pricing will govern. I will have that around a index price based in North Carolina that has been much more advantageous to us in past years. It typically stays more level when there's a spike in the wintertime. For example, one year it went up to like three dollars a gallon in February, and more than that on the Virginia index. And the Virginia index stayed high in margin, we were back down where we were by middle margin. So we'd like to stick with that index as well. Any questions or comments from the board?
It probably makes more sense to hedge now because of the current fuel situation.
Yes, sir.
So is everybody comfortable with this? Okay, so would you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I will make a motion that we accept Mr. Arnold's proposal for the renewal of the propane contract for FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold, thank you, members of the board for that support. Item G, the last item under my reports and recommendations, and that is the presentation of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school board meeting calendar. As, as the board knows, our last meeting will be, I think, June twenty-seventh for this year. And so what that begs the question of is a school board meeting calendar for next year. And so Ms. Byram has put this together rather nicely for your consideration for your next year's board meetings. Ms. Byram, do you want to add anything to that?
Don't really have much to add, other than it's just, it's based on the schedule that you approved at the beginning of the year, first Monday, last Monday. There are a couple instances in here where it's not on a Monday, not on a first or last Monday due to a holiday or a conference that's always the same time. So it's pretty much the same schedule this year, just the dates are changing.
Thank you, Ms. Byram. Any comments?
And that concludes superintendent's reports and recommendations for this May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Hand it over to Ms. Byram for your conclusions.
So it looks like I'll be starting this agenda over and taking up a lot of time. We will still have the approval of my calendar on there, and I do have a governor's school report up at the lead, do you have any?
No, we, Lewis Governor's School doesn't meet until
Until next year, no?
School year next year, I, I think it's September.
Okay, so I'll take you off for the summer, and Ms. Quinter, I forgot to put Head Start, I'm not sure if the policy council has anything.
We have one more, I didn't bring my, we do have one more meeting planned, I believe it's before
This meeting?
This meeting, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll add you, we can always take it off if we have. I think that's about it for that.
I've talked about the Lewis Governor's School in several different groups, I, I did give the report here, didn't I? About our new director, okay, that's fine, thank you.
As we look at the June calendar coming up here, we, right now, it looks pretty clear, I'm sure we'll add a few things. We do have a school law conference on June third, if any of you are interested in attending, that's the BSBA School Law Conference. And then, of course, we have our school board meeting on the sixth, and the work session on the twenty-seventh. And then for July, that we get another week in between meetings again because of the holiday on the fourth, that Monday. So that meeting will not be until the eleventh, and then our work session's on the twenty-fifth. And our new teachers will return a little earlier than our regular, regular teachers on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And that's all I have.
Just for the record, I missed the first meeting in July eleventh.
It's the same for me, too.
The eleventh?
The eleventh.
Okay, so Ms. Quinter and Ms. Anderson, are you guys going to be here?
I'll be available, but it's since the board, we can move it to another day, another Monday. Well, we had to have a form, so.
We're on the eighteenth, I mean, I would back a month to each other, but I got a tight schedule, the first month, the first weeks of July.
No, I'm good.
I'm, I'm, I'm taking my wife to Sedona, Arizona, from the seventh to the fourteenth.
Okay, so the eighteenth for you, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Was it July eighteenth?
Yes, ma'am. I'll update the calendar. One, I think it's It's all right, yeah, it was important to you.
And, and, are we talking about changing, or are we changing?
No, we're changing it to the eighteenth.
But thank you very much, because I think we'll have a new superintendent on board, then it'd be nice to have a new board here. Takes his first meeting.
Likewise, thanks for the indulgence.
All right, is that it, Ms. Byram?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we will turn it over to closed session, certification, and can you add in the new superintendent?
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of Dakota, Virginia, I move that the Orange County School Board convene in closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel for the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of Dakota, Virginia, for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees in the new superintendent's contract.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
As we're closing.